Okay, it's about to shut down. We're going by the computer time, which is a couple of minutes off that.
Okay, I'm trying to turn this thing on. Always this thing, this is what I have to do, this is what I can't just open up. This blue panel. Is it true?
You hang out there.
Well, you're, you're breathing.
You'll be in law, yes, Bill.
You did what we talked about.
Yes. Yes. Cut that grandpa McCoy D. now. Joe.
Oh.
Pass it. Especially. You know, people who don't keep a blog watch, if they have one, look at our website, they can see that. There's a lot of people that use it. I love it. The tarot. I work in, in, in. I said, "Go daddy states me."
One, two, one, two. Call City Gold Bar Council meeting for tis October the first. Tis that, in order, please stand some place. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, I'd like to know, we have three council members here tonight forming a quorum. Ed Ware is out in Asia and will be there for about the first two weeks of October. He talked, wrote about this last week. I'll entertain a motion to excuse his absence.
Also move.
In a second.
All second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. Okay, staff members tonight, Chief Casey and John White. And we have a new staff person, Lisa Stoll, she is the city clerk. She is now moving, she has been the city clerk and working on clearing up our record retention situation. And now she's moving on to other city clerk activities. And she'll be coming to the council meetings from now on. Okay, did I miss anyone? No, okay. So, having amended the agenda, the agenda went out and we had some other things show up. And we also had a rearrangement. So, what we're gonna do, Denise is here tonight to talk about a specific code enforcement problem we have. There's a Boomtown program, did we have those people here? Okay, and which is gonna be talking about some activities, business type activities in the valley. We've got the employee benefit, our local agreement we talked about last night, secret reading and approval of the ordinance. Then, we have a resolution for parking restrictions, which I got dumped on a couple of times, so we'll just talk about it. And then we, as you saw in your thread ring binders, we have a lot of proposed ordinance changes coming up. This is not new, this has been going, ongoing since 2011, looking at some stuff. And then, we've got US two addition, we've got our retainer papers on this last week. And so it's time to release that last month. And then we've got some roadworks stuff we want to talk about. So, that's it, and I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Does someone move? No, a second.
All second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, I've actually got several things to talk about tonight in the mayor's report. Got to pre-load them, so we'll see how it goes. Okay, here's, here's, I always like to do this. This is the press release I sent out today, it will be sent out to a lot of places. I always like to send out the news. Our insurance company paid off the difference between what the fraud losses were and what we recovered. And so I sent out a press release and read it by Bank of America and AWC for their approval. And everybody's happy with it, and so this is going out. The, we recovered over half of the funds, working with Bank of America and their security people. And then, the remaining funds, the underwriter of AWC covered all but a thousand dollar deductible. And AWC covered the deductible. So, we real happy to report that we got the money back. And sort of that the money we pay for our insurance coverage is put to good use. We is gonna make this a little bigger. We have, yeah. Lisa now is, is securities on the city clerk side of things, Denise of course is doing lots of things. And so we're looking for a city treasurer, as we said, Harry is going back into retirement. He came in to help us, he came out of retirement to help us out, he's ready to go back into retirement. And so this was put out on the AWC job day, we've had a couple of phone calls, but haven't received any resumes or any real applications yet. The state auditor really wanted us to pre-audit the books before they showed up, which is a good idea. And both monthly check and a quarterly check. I talked with Cody Nelson, she, she used to work in state auditor as the small city specialist. She would go around make sure small cities knew what the rules were and follow them. And that, her job got cut and cutbacks. And she now has her own business out of Spokane, and she assists Guy Comish with financial stuff. So she is available to particularly the quarterly review, make sure that all the line items, the right line items, and all that stuff that the state auditor can really gets into. And that would cost probably about a thousand dollars a visit. So we're talking, we get ready to do the budget, there'd be a four thousand dollar line item in for professional services under finances for, for her services. There's also a question of how do we handle the monthly reconciliations and things like that. And hopefully, if we've got a person like this, that would easily cover it. But like I said, haven't received any applications as yet. There it is. You have this in your packet, this is a tough little analysis of, yeah, of marijuana businesses. And I gave it to you because it's very thorough and very formal, they have, they have stuff like deputy planners and stuff. And so, the, and they gave the options that we could do for the rules, and it's good reading. We still have, there's a, an aura of uncertainty in medical marijuana. The recreational marijuana is fairly well defined as these things go. And our founders' offsets are about what we said before. So you just need to read this, so you can be known, but we still need to amend the ordinance, in my opinion, eliminating any marijuana business in residential zones, in our zones. And then, what we do after that is something that the council needs to be thinking about pretty seriously. And, and Sergeant Casey, in my opinion, will have a, you know, a large input on that. And then when, okay, we got our audit. We had a big audit. And I'm just want everybody to read it. The, basically, made it too slow now. We got really nailed on one thing. And that was when we released the contract for the sidewalk, we didn't do it in the format that they thought appropriate. Now, it was the format that Washington State Department of Transportation, which is for all their projects. So, I, but we didn't have the people here to correct the Washington State Department of Transport, Transportation on this. So anyway, but that's, as far as I can tell, the only finding we got and everything else, we've been addressing and we can still do it better. And there was a lot of go back and forth, they dug in the, they're, she's coming back for one more go around on this. So we're getting a very thorough look at the state auditor. And we have gone back and forth on things that Harry's worked on and I've worked on. So, it's, I'm pretty happy with myself. Not perfect, but hey, we had a rough year last year. Okay, that's all the nonsense in the mayor. So let's start with staff reports. Sergeant Casey, you look anticipatory.
Nope, not at all. Mayor asked me to talk to our command staff about contract proposal, and so I've had one meeting with command staff so far. And then now it's just a matter of waiting for the bureau chief that handles the crunching of the numbers to get that sent to us. And so, the Deputy Service Association got the first raise since 2008. So, I would imagine that will have some impact, but I really don't know what kind of, you know, for sure that's gonna be, so.
Did you rush out my Lamborghini because of that?
No. No, I took my dog to the veterinarian, nobody will kill it.
Dog?
So, what's that?
Killed the dog?
No. No, we wanted the dog to survive, that was expensive. So we've had a lot of reports about this white van in town, and I want to make sure everybody understands that the white van is, yeah. When those guys are doing something suspicious, we want to know, just like anybody else. But we can't just single a guy out just because he doesn't live in town. And so we need to be careful about what, you know, what we're looking at. At the same time, the calls that I've gotten upon, and actually really haven't got a lot of calls, I've got primarily the emails, I did get one phone call about them. When I have responded, it has been something that absolutely warrants a 911 call, warrants having us go check it out and look into it. You know, get it dealt with. Been quite a few burglaries in town, burglaries and thefts around the region started picking up again in August. And that's continued here in September. At least some of the burglaries are things like the sawmill place over here, somebody cut the fence and tried to pull one of the sawmills through the fence. And they couldn't get it through the fence, and so they left frustrated, I guess. But we have had some residential burglaries, and there's one I wanted to talk about a little bit, because I would imagine there's been a little talk around town. We actually had one, a party complaint was called in while the deputies were around, somebody called in, hey, we heard what we saw, think is a gun shop. We think somebody in the car that was leaving fired a gun. Now, the deputies got there, it actually was the homeowner fired a gun, so that the burglar would leave. And it, it sounds like kind of a party that went very, very wrong. It really went too intoxicated, it kind of undermined, it did something stupid. But we're not sure yet, that's just kind of what it sounds like from the initial, you know, look at the thing. So we are trying to solve the burglaries, Deputy Griner did an excellent job of recovering some trace evidence on one of these. And, you know, we're just, now we are in a holding pattern on that one, waiting for the crime lab to do their magic with it. And the last time we had this, I was able to get the crime lab to expedite things, because I could show that we had a serial burglar. And in this case, I just don't have consistent, you know, methods used by the burglars in different cases around town to be able to say this is all one subject. And quite frankly, I'm pretty certain it's not one subject right now. So it's, it's a few people. We've got some names that have come up in some of these cases, and they're not the same names in one case versus the next versus the next. So, so we're looking at those though. Drug activity, the reports to me about drug activity are kind of up a little bit again. It was, it was never really gone, but got a couple of people showed up back in town that have, since they came back, names have been pretty active again. And we're working on that, I've been contacting them pretty regularly. We contacted a gentleman in town on about the eighteenth. An unrelated misdemeanor matter. Went over to contact him at his house and found him standing in the street talking to his probation officer, so that was kind of convenient. And arrested him in front of his probation officer, and then pulled a good, a good amount of heroin from, off of his person. And if you read here, he had quite the explanation of how he had picked that up and planned to turn that over to the police. But he'd been talking to his probation officers for fifteen minutes, and he talked to us for five or ten minutes, and then we arrested him. Wasn't until we opened up the container and found all the heroin that he decided to tell us about it, so. So he got to go to jail for that one. But we are, we are running, that's for sure, in the last few weeks. This, the last five, six days seem to have quieted down just a little bit. But first, first twenty-five days of this month, we were running and running, so. We also solved a caper in town. This is one that my, I'm getting on my pulpit here. Please call when something suspicious is happening, please call us. Please tell your friends and your neighbors, please call us when there's something suspicious. There's a gentleman flashing gold Krugerrands and gold maple leaf coins and silver maple leaf coins around town with various stories about how he'd come across these things. Not anybody that heard the stories ever believed them even once. And yet, it wasn't until we contacted a citizen on a different matter to talk to him about something, asked for a witness statement from him, that he decided to bring up this gold Krugerrand thing. And then, literally going door to door, door knocking, and people telling me, oh yeah, 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 he showed those to me too, whatever, they were, I'm pretty sure they were stolen. Well, that was a week ago, why, why am I the pride out of you? So, it, it's really important that we get that stuff reported to us when it happens. We've solved the caper, we know where he stole them, he's gonna go to prison for a long, long time. He's hiding from us right now. But he's a guy that was living in town, he's not living in town right at the moment, because he's too busy trying to avoid us. That won't last very long. But what did happen is the, the, just about nine-year-old woman who owned these gold coins, that was her savings, the way she saved money. We didn't get those back for her, because by the time somebody finally called her to tell us about them, they'd already been sold to processors. And they're out there somewhere on the international market, who God only knows where. And so, they aren't even in the region anymore. So we just want to remember, when there's something happening, just call in, we're not gonna ball you out for calling us. And so, I'm not sure we could have solved the thing with those gold coins, because the company that bought those shipped them out the day they bought them. But maybe, maybe, there was a person that actually saw that day, saw that guy's name on the gold buying counter in the gold business that, that knew that he had no business selling gold, and didn't tell us that, so. So we just want to know, but.
Yeah, I understand in King County, 911 is for emergencies only, correct?
And that's a, that's a confusing thing, and the news media records that constantly too. Only call 911 when there's an emergency. And so, 911's our only phone number for the police to get a deputy to respond for a call for service. And that's really it. A lot of people use Ray, and Ray's wonderful about getting that information to me as quickly as he possibly can. But there's still a delay, because they send it to Ray via email. And, and a lot of folks leave messages on our line here in the office, and, or they call my cellphone on Friday night at two o'clock in the morning. And I'll tell you, my ringer's not on at Friday night at two o'clock in the morning, so.
Yeah, the 911 also keeps track of all these calls, so you can see trends and concentrations, right?
Yes, that's correct. And, you know, in King County, they have a Crime Stoppers type of line, Spokane called theirs a Crime Stoppers line, or a and I'm not sure what King County calls theirs, but it's a non-emergency number to report things that aren't happening right now, that are threatening life and property. So, but here we just have 911, we just want to make sure we get those reminders out as regularly and as often as possible. Nobody's upset with anybody for not calling 911, we're certainly not. But we do want to remind people that that's what we're here for. We can serve you a lot better if you report to us what it is that you're seeing, that makes the hair on the back of your neck look.
Okay, thank you. John?
Three things, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
You've sure helped me out in the past, and I'm sure you've been helping out in the future. We did have the back truck out with clean catch basins for today. Apparently, what we did was a success. Because the last monsoons we had on May Creek Road, we were usually flooded to First Street. The mine oil actually didn't flood. And we got a lot of stuff out of that, so that was money well spent out of the storm, rainstorm. And usually in the spring, we go around and we flush hydrants. Because we were doing all the work on well four, and we knew that we were gonna, you know, have some issues in flushing it. We opted not to flush the hydrants this last spring. But since we have well four running now, and we have good clean water running out of it, we reduced a lot of the fine grave particulates. Was pretty obvious when we first started up, we've got that down to none to nil. We've decided we're gonna start flushing hydrants, so beginning on, I think Monday, the fourteenth of October.
Yeah.
Denise and Richard will be out between ten PM and two AM flushing hydrants. And we do that at night, so we don't stir the system up during the daytime when people are using it or we have the businesses utilizing water for the cafes and stuff like that. You shouldn't even notice anything but better water after that. And any time during the year, if people notice that there's something, you know, if there's a turbidity or whatever, you know, change in their water, make sure you call City Hall, and then over a while, they'll check on that right away. But well four's run real well, well three's run real well, and we're busy, just like the chief said, he was busy, so. That's about it, thank you.
Miss, do you have anything to say?
Sure, as you see in your packets, there's been some work done on ordinances. You'll have ordinance drafts that are proposed to go over, tonight will be the first introduction of those, I believe. And I'm gonna be working on the municipal code and updating any ordinances, so if there's anything you've come across as you're going through municipal code, let me know, or leave me a message, and I will tickle it out.
Okay, oh, council, Lee, we'll start with you.
I don't really have many comments, but I would like to comment on the auditor's report about our, our not checking up on the Davis-Bacon Act. Which is a responsibility of the contractor, is also a responsibility of the city. And so I don't, I don't know who's responsible for that, if it would be John or the council or?
Well, we thought we had, you know, we had a one-inch thick packet, bid package. And in the bid package, it says, if you've been to this proposal, then you do everything in these orange pieces of paper. And the orange pieces of paper had Davis Bacon, it had the barbed, a zillion other things, okay? So by the presentation, by, by pointing on that, you inherently adhered to all those things. That's standard DOT, okay? So, and in that packet was a two-page contract that says, yes, Rick, I want to do this job. And that was part of the package. So, looked at that, I felt it covered everything for what I know, I'm not an expert in that, I'm not pretend to be. W H Pacific, who does this for a living, thought that was proper. And the Washington State Department of Transportation thought it was proper, because that was their form, that was their book. So we all worked under the assumption that, yes, they knew about the, they were properly notified. The auditor said, but on that two-page piece of paper, you didn't reference Davis Bacon or this, or this margin. And that was what the argument came in. And so, I'm gonna back off and let the Department of Transportation stay on.
I know, that, everything turned out fine, as it was. But I'm just saying that in the future, that we want to make sure that the person that gets the job is eligible to get the job. And that they are, if it's a government sponsored job at Davis Bacon.
All of that happened, all of that happened on the Retha Bar. And all of that happened on the job, on the sidewalk and the Retha Bar by the engineering consultant who ran the project. So, I mean, that did happen, it just didn't happen in the format that the state auditor thought it was gonna happen.
I mean, it did just, well, according to what I read, the City of Gold Bar did not check into it. It didn't, City of Gold Bar wasn't notified every week about a certified period.
Oh, oh, that is correct. We were notified to our contracted engineering manager. So, but he, they were not a employee of the city, but they were a, they were a hired consultant for the city. And we did the same thing with the Shoreline Master Plan, we did the same thing with, oh, Water Comprehensive Plan. We did the same thing with, oh, Water Comprehensive Plan, sidewalk, reservoir, all of those. The midriddling different things were hand, were subcontracted, if you were, to people with the expertise in that field to make sure things were done properly. And the city did not, doesn't have the expertise to work with all those things. And it's just not, you know, so, anyway, so that's what we left. And that was their statement that was nervous to us. But the, then they said they, they did say they, you know, they had Davis Bacon.
So, everything turned out good?
Everything, yeah. Never went astray. It just, we didn't coordinate it right.
That's all the comments I have.
Excuse me for launching, but...
Yeah, well...
I've been going around with the auditors for a pretty big time.
I just think, I would just make it if there's anything that we need to do in the future to make sure that it's Davis Bacon. If we have to make sure it's certified payroll...
Davis Bacon is one out of about a half-inch stack of paper. There's also some others labor standards and this one and the D O T standards. There's a whole potful of things that they have to meet. Davis Bacon is one out of maybe a dozen things that they have to meet efficiently. And they chose Davis Bacon for it. But, yeah, I'll give you the bid package and you can go through there and see all of the requirements that they signed up for when they submitted the proposal.
Well, this bid package did it's done for, but maybe the next one...
May I volunteer to check that there be all federal standards that were ever written and applied?
Well, I think that they should be checked, that, there were three things that should be checked. It tells you in there what three things you can do. And don't include a whole big package of things. You can check three things without checking the whole thing.
Okay, so you're saying that the state auditor says that of federal contracts there are three things the city should check?
It tells you three things you can do.
Okay.
You can, you can put the responsibility onto, onto a contractor that is certified with the government to do the work. You can put the responsibility onto them and you can tell them to give you a copy of a certified payroll once a week.
Oh, so the certified payroll, look at the certified payroll is, is, is the, what are they talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
If it's not a certified payroll, if the person that's employed is not getting Davis Bacon Act, he's getting under wages, and it's not a certified payroll, and we approved the contract, then we can be held responsible to give the money back to the government for the grant that they paid us.
Okay.
So, regardless of how thick the things are, it's still, we still need to look for some of those things and make sure that that part is done.
Yeah. Okay. Gotcha.
That's the end of my comment.
Good, thank you. Yes, sir?
Welcome, Mike.
Thank you.
Two things.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. Welcome.
Thank you. Yes, welcome also. First is, there's going to be a dinner for Snohomish County Cities on October seventeenth in Arlington. And I'd like to go. And if any of the other council people would like to go, we've got some time. It's October seventeenth, which is a Thursday. And they're going to be talking about legislative issues that affect small cities. It's about small cities. The other thing is happening this Thursday. There's going to be a candidate forum at the Sultan High School in the Commons, starting at six thirty with the meet and greet. And there's gonna be Sultan and Gold Bar, council and mayor positions. And I think it's going to be a really, really good idea for people to come and meet the people who are running. Because we've got people that we need to get to know. So, and if you had heard about it?
And it's put on by the League of Women Voters.
The League of Women Voters and I believe the Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, Chambers started doing it.
The Chamber and the League of Women Voters are sponsoring it, so. Nobody with any political agendas putting it on.
I mean, county position five in here too.
Yeah, that's right. So, it's going to be a really, really worthwhile meeting to attend. Gotcha?
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, set some comments.
It's this Thursday.
Oh, this Thursday.
I'm sorry, this Thursday.
Mark and Lindsay, next is Thursday. Yeah.
Yeah.
Any set of some comments before we launch into the business? Launch twice? Okay. Well, let's go to the first item of business. Denise is here to do this. We're gonna be talking about ordinance changes and some of them need to be done quickly, like the one we're making second reading of tonight. And this is another one. There was some places around here that had garbage in the yard and unmowed and stuff, and unmowed grass that violated one of our ordinances. And they were foreclosed houses. And I was getting ready to drop the hammer of Thor on them, two hundred dollars a day fines. And we talked to Dave about it and discovered that I didn't have any hammer, that we've been using the sheriff department to enforce city code. But it turns out they only enforce a few of them. And the current ordinance doesn't provide for any other option. So, let me close. And so, anyway, ooh. Blow this up a little bit. So, what we've got presented, and this is not, this is just for the introduction, is that it says, you know, "Any law enforcement officer, yada, 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 has the authorization of civil infraction notices for any violations." Okay, well, our contract didn't actually cover that in the sheriff. So, that's gonna be changed to, "Any law enforcement officer or any authorized person employed by the city of Gold Bar will be authorized to enforce, yada, yada." And so, that's what we're gonna change so that we actually can have a code enforcement. And that was a real surprise to me. And I think what else we got here? Second reading, I'm not sure what else is... Okay, yeah, this is the current deal. So, next week, we will be having an ordinance set up to change this. And so, you need to read it and think about it. And while we're at it in chapter one, yeah, one sixteen, we need to also take a look and make sure that we've got all of the things we need in this. This again is assuming that we all take it to court. And we've gotta make sure that we've got enough, enough power to do something on these things. And then the next thing Denise is gonna talk about. Here's a simple law enforcement. Yeah, good. There we go. All right, Denise, you're on. Here's the example of how law enforcement would work. I'm gonna go to the...
All right, so this is a non-traffic infraction. These ticket books is, are what the deputies were using. They're issued to City of Gold Bar, or City of, they're City of Gold Bar code books. This is basically just a, sort of a mock one, written to Jane Doe. Right now, like Joe said, when I do code enforcement, whether it be garbage or animal control, what happens is I go out and I hang you a door hanger or mail you a door hanger. Since you have seven days, ten days to comply with the ordinance. After that, I really have nothing else to follow that up with. And most people know it. So, most people aren't gonna comply with what I'm asking them to do. The next step has been asking Joe to write a letter and then, you know, getting really threatening and sending it to an attorney to write a letter. Well, attorneys don't work for free. We have ordinances, we need to be able to enforce them. That doesn't mean that I'm gonna be out writing infractions all day long, willy-nilly. Means I'm gonna do the same thing I'm doing right now with just a little extra teeth if the person doesn't wanna comply. So, if you have garbage in your yard, you're not willing to clean it up, I've given you a copy of Gold Bar municipal codes and said, "This is what we need you to do to comply." And you're just not willing to budge on that. You'll be notified that it is a hundred dollars per day if this has to be written. And so, you know, this is an affidavit in support. So, when an infraction is written, this is what the deputies would write out, or in my case, what I would write out that supports what I've done. That I've identified in this case, it was, I went to a property for a barking dog complaint. Two dogs in the yard, and one of them has a clear ID tag on, the other one does not. Identified the owner. The dog had been there longer than thirty days and did not have a current city license, which is required within thirty days of moving into the city or acquiring a dog. So, this was, you know, I've given her notice. I've identified her, I've identified it's her dog. It's lived there for longer than thirty days and she's, she hasn't complied. I gave her seven days in this case to comply with the dog license rules. She was given a copy of the Gold Bar municipal code and along with a copy of the dog license form. Just fill out, drop in the drop box, mail it in, ring it in. It's pretty easy. She didn't comply, so this is what was written. And that kind of follows up. This is the code that she would've been given. This will be attached with my statement to the infraction. It will be actually sent to the court. I won't be writing you a ticket and handing it to you. I won't be mailing it to you. It will be the courts mailing it to you. I would prefer not to write any of these. But, you know, we need to be able to enforce our codes. If we can't enforce them, it really does us no good in having... These guys are slammed most of the time. People seem to think that they sit in the office and wait for something to happen. But that's not what they do. They're out there all the time, working on, you know, looking for what's going on and responding to calls all day long. They come in here, do their reports and use the facilities, and then they're back out in the streets. So, we need to be able to enforce our own laws or they're just no good. So, that's...
And this is why you say, otherwise, I call it the three E's, education, encouragement, enforcement. And we typically talk to a lot of people and say, "Hey, you need to have this done." They say, "Yeah, here it goes." And they say, "Oh, okay, we'll do it." And then, they don't do it, you gotta say, "Look, you know, if something's not happy, better put this down." And then, if they don't do it, we don't have any enforcement mechanisms except for a narrow range of things. So, this will give us a chance. But it also means that we need to make sure our codes are good and stuff like this and that it'll be best to hold you up. Okay.
And pretty much everything I do, I'll be asking these guys when I get a chance to talk to them. Hey, just because, you know, it's not something that I'm used to doing. It's, you know, I really do like the input that I get from these guys who do it every day. So, that's, that's basically it. Does anyone have any questions?
Okay, thank you very much, Denise.
All right, thank you. N C I S is calling my name.
Very good. Okay, we have a Boomtown presentation coming up. Could you please put up and put your name and such? And then, anywhere up here will be my, here is the recorder, so don't be too far away from it.
I'll just work from here and...
Okay, speak loud.
Use my big voice. That's the Seahawks' voice, right?
Yes.
Okay.
What, forty B B, right?
Something like that. I am a trained singer, so I can fill the house. My name is Paula Thomas, and I live in Sultan. And I'm gonna talk to you tonight about Boomtown. So, you probably, almost all of you are probably saying, "Boomtown? What is that?" Mayor Beavers, city council staff, citizens of Gold Bar. Boomtown is a book. Boomtown, the book, is Boomtown, U S A, The Seven and a Half Keys to Big Success in Small Towns. And this book was brought to Sultan by our new city administrator, Ken Walker, who happens to be a resident of Gold Bar. And this book was written by a man named Jack Schultz, who lives in Illinois, where I came from. He saw his town of Effingham dying because their one and only major employer shut its doors. Mr. Schultz wanted to find out what he could personally do to keep his town from dying. So, he started doing some research in what made towns successful. And he first defined what success was. And he, he identified that as job growth and income growth. Now, those of you who've lived here longer than me, I've been here just over a year, you know that job growth and income growth here in the Sky Valley hasn't been huge. And most of the people, I can't speak for Gold Bar, but I know that in Sultan, ninety percent of everybody who lives there leaves town to go to their jobs. Eighty percent of the people who work in Sultan come from somewhere else. So, there's, there's really not a lot for a newcomer to our valley to say, "Okay, I'm moving to one of those little towns because I can find a job in the little town." They come to the little towns for the quality of life and then drive somewhere else. My son lives in Sultan. He drives to Bellevue to work every day. Boomtown, U S A, can help us in the Sky Valley bring new life, more life, to the valley. The seven and a half keys that Mr. Schultz talks about in this book are, number one, a staff adopt a can-do attitude. And we've already got that. The Sky Valley is known for its volunteerism. I know in Sultan, we have volunteer this and volunteer that. And I'm quite certain that Gold Bar's the same way. There are volunteers all the time doing the stuff that needs to be done because the city coffers aren't full enough to do it for us. So, we volunteer to do things. Number two is shape your vision. You're not gonna go anywhere if you don't know what you wanna do. That's in every aspect of life. You're not gonna finish a college degree unless you put in your mind, "I'm gonna get a college education." So, you have to have a vision for what you're going to do. Number three is to leverage resources. We have an abundance of natural resources in this valley. We've got rivers that are known nationally, even worldwide, for our fishing. We've got forests, we've got hiking, we've got all kinds of natural resources that can be used to help develop the area. Number four is raise up strong leaders. None of you got here without coaching from someone else. Someone raised you up to become a leader and helped teach you how to do whatever it is you do to help lead your community. Same with all of you. You're taught from the time you're little how to be a leader in whatever it is your field. I am personally being coached as I lead this project. I'm being coached by the mayor of Sultan, by the city administrator, and several of these staff members. Number five is to encourage an entrepreneurial approach. Now, entrepreneurial approach is kind of a big word that gets thrown around all over the place. And so, for accuracy, I went and looked it up. I wanted to know exactly what was meant by an entrepreneurial approach. An entrepreneur doesn't just do stuff. They make an investment, they take a risk. Not everything we do is gonna work. And that's just with life. We don't get a home run unless we swing a bat. And most of the time, the bat gets swung... And most of the time, the bat gets swung and the ball goes by. Most of the time, if you do make contact, you're still getting out. You're only, you're considered a good batter if you get on base only a third of the time that you come to bat. But sometimes you hit a home run. So you're making an investment, you're taking a risk. Number six is a big one in my ma- mind, and that's maintain local control. We don't want Bank of America or something big like Microsoft or Boeing running our communities. These are our communities, this is our valley. We want our skin and sweat and blood in whatever it is we do. Number seven is to build a brand. That just means who are we? We see, on the other side of the mountains, we see Leavenworth. They are a theme town. And everything I've learned about the Sky Valley says, mm, we don't want anything like... I've only been to Leavenworth once and I see a lot of small businesses that have perhaps an owner making money, but employees are cleaning toilets, maybe, maybe working behind a counter, definitely not making a good living wage. Now, I mentioned that there are seven and a half keys. What the heck is a half a key? The half key is what makes it different, is the teeter-totter effect. And all that means is that a small change in one direction can have a big impact in the other direction. So we can do little things to make things better. We're already getting started. We're talking about this, we're talking about it a lot. We've started having meetings in Sultan twice a month. We meet in the morning on the first Tuesday of the month at nine P M. And in the evening on the third Tuesday of the month at seven P M. So the group met this morning. We may be curtailing some of the meetings as we get into the holiday season. We're definitely having a meeting in two weeks at seven P M. in the Sultan Council Chambers. I don't like to call it the Sultan Council Chambers because a lot of people think it's run by the city. It's not. It's being coached by some of the members of the city, but I'm an ordinary citizen. I'm not on staff, I'm not anything. I'm a cashier at Staples. So those of you who've seen me, that's where you've seen me. I'm a cashier at Staples in Monroe. And I just live in Sultan. I'm running this thing, not because there's anything special about me, but because I happened to go to a meeting and they were looking for a leader. And I said, um, "Yeah, I'll step up to the plate and do it." And I'm looking for people to join in because this is a fight. We're not at the point where we're necessarily fighting for our lives as towns are concerned, but we are at a point where if we don't start doing something, we may fight ourselves in that situation. Like any plant, if it's not growing, it's dying. If you don't water your plant, it's going to start wilting. So we need to start watering our communities to help them start growing more instead of just kind of hanging there. I'm looking for help. If you'd like to be involved in this, Davy's been coming to several of the meetings. And, um, I will probably make my exit after all you've answered my questions, but I can be in touch through Davy to get any email addresses or answer any additional questions that you may have. If you're interested in reading the book, Ken Walker has a few of them that he's circulating. I'm not sure if he's got any of them in hand or if they're all out. I bought my copy on Amazon and it costs, I think, four dollars used. It was about a seven or eight dollar book. And it's a very easy read. And we are kind of tying this in with the Innovative Partnership Zone effort. Don't know if any of you have, are familiar with that, but that's an effort to join business, education, and government together to promote the growth of industry in the recreational area. We've already got a world-renowned paddle builder in the area, and we want to bring in more businesses like that. And with that, I'm going to open it up to questions.
Okay, now we tend to run a town hall, we can hear sort of questions from council and jacks. I get first questions, I guess, but it's only for the audience wishing to ask a question. We'd like to keep it quick and there's a lot of stuff on the, on the agenda. Council have any questions? Citizens, any question? I think we're very clear on this, and the next meeting is when?
The next meeting is two weeks from right now.
Okay, which is Tuesday.
That would be Tuesday, October fifteenth.
At what time?
Seven P M.
Seven P M. is a good hour, council. So.
But I do have a mailing list. And if anybody's interested in getting on that mailing list, let me know, I can...
See Davy?
See Davy, yes. Is that okay with you? Okay, and she can, uh, forward all that to me and I'll add you to my mailing list.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, the next thing is our, last week I gave you the insurance ILA. It has been, uh, I guess... Oh, here it is. It has been read over by a city attorney and it's very straightforward. And this is just the twenty fourteen, uh... What do you call it? Employing benefits, okay. And, uh, yeah, 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 there we go. And anyways, there's no, no... It's just an update of the ILA and the benefits and Harry looked at it, but he's not here. I believe the, uh, healthcare program, the, the, I understand that the premiums have not gone up this year. And so it's, it's something that we just need to go ahead and do so we can maintain, uh, equality insurance. This goes on, how many pages is it? Yeah, seventeen. So you've had a chance to read it. Does any of the council have any questions or comments?
No, do we need to, I, uh, to pass that or...
Yeah, I need a motion to sign the agreement.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance six forty-four, the next reading. This is one of the things that came out of the auditor's meeting both last time and this time. And this time we got around to fixing it. This is the, uh, ordinance where, uh, it says you have to have a purchase order for everything. And as far as I know, the city has never issued a purchase order. Can't say that for certain, I just have never received one. There we go. And it's for expenditure funds below a hundred bucks. And so what we did, kept the intent, uh, we don't have departments, we have funds, so we're too small to have departments. I guess everybody can do it. And then, uh, it just says purchases within the associated funds budget, uh, and sufficient funds or amount will cover the purchase, which is what we do all the time anyway. And so that's the change, and this is the second reading. And it's the same reading we had last time. So I'll entertain a motion for second reading and approval of ordinance six forty-four.
I'll make the motion.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, this is, uh, uh, ordinance six forty, uh, what, I just got, no, sure, all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. This is an ordinance six forty-four, City of Gold Bar and ordinance of the City of Gold Bar, Washington, amending Gold Bar Municipal Code three dot O eight dot O one O related to expenditure funds providing for severability and establishing an effective date. And I'll get that out to, uh, the Herald tonight for legal publication and effect.